On ninety-two point five and Fredericksburg on ninety-four point nine. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am calling to order the Roanoke City Council regular session for June seventh at two P M. I will ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Bespich?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Lee.
And a quorum is present. This afternoon's invocation would be led by Reverend John Landis, who is the lead minister at Growing Families Ministry, Roanoke Valley. Good afternoon, Mr. Landis.
Good afternoon, all. Pleasure to be able to be on here with you. Thanks so much for reaching out.
Thank you, Reverend. Want to go ahead and pray? Please stand.
Excellent, let's pray together. Lord, heaven, God, we are extremely grateful, Father, to be able to speak to you today and be able to pray. I just ask, as we pray over our wonderful city here in Roanoke and surrounding counties and cities, God, we pray for just great wisdom and great discernment, continuation of that wisdom and discernment for all of our fantastic leaders here in Roanoke. God, we pray for the mayor and the vice mayor and all the council men and women here that have gathered to oversee projects and discern how to meet the needs of our city. God, we pray for your strength to be with them and be over them, give them great diligence and perseverance and great support. God, we thank you for that we have such great men and women here to oversee these projects and meet the needs. And we just ask, God, that you make their burdens light and their way straight and clear. And again, we are grateful, Father, that you give us opportunities to lead and shepherd your people. Please be and bless our great city of Roanoke. We ask all this in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you so much, Reverend Landis, for that beautiful prayer. And before we go with the Pledge of Allegiance, I will yield the floor to Mr. Bespich.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Some of you may have noted in yesterday's paper, Mr. Calvin Powers passed away. He was a very successful businessman in our city and made a lot of investments in commercial property. And I'd just like to ask that we observe a few moments of silence in his memory before we do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bespich. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon again, everybody. I don't know if it's me, but I'm a little warm. Today's council meeting will be televised live and replayed on R V TV, Channel Three, on Thursday, June ten, at seven P M. And Saturday, June twelve, at four P M. And video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. Announcements. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expirations of terms of office. The Mill Mountain Advisory Board, one vacancy. Personnel and Employment Practices Commission, two vacancies. Roanoke Arts Commission, two vacancies. Roanoke Public Library Board, two vacancies. And the Toying Advisory Board, one vacancy, which would be a citizen-at-large. Access to the city's homepage to complete an online application for the above-mentioned vacancies. And I would certainly encourage all of our residents who would like to be a part of what we're doing and be a part of the city and helping us move forward, to apply for some of these vacancies. We'd love to have you on board. And if you have any questions, you can certainly contact the clerk's office. Presentations and acknowledgements. I'd like to introduce our city attorney's office staff, or well, call on the city attorney to introduce his new staff. Mr. Spencer?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. If I might take a moment, we've had a lot of exciting changes in the city attorney's office. I want to start with, we worked with Steve Martin in hiring a new attorney for representing D S S. Jennifer Crook, if she could kindly stand? No, you don't get to just sit and wait. Now, I know she's going to be tired having to stand because she competed this weekend in the Ironman. And she's done a wonderful job. I've heard great feedback from our local judges as well as attorneys. And Steve Martin has been very appreciative of her efforts since joining the city. And we've had other changes. We have hired not one, or elevated not one, but two senior assistant city attorneys. If I could introduce the council to both David Collins and Laura Carini. Both of these attorneys have been with the city for quite some time. And you probably are well aware of the services that they provide to this council and to the city administration. We interviewed and the panel came to the conclusion that we had two wonderful people who were doing great service for the city. And they each brought something different to the table in representing the city. So I'm very proud and pleased to introduce both of these individuals as your new senior assistant city attorneys for the city of Roanoke.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you.
And I understand we've had some changes in the clerk's office. So I'd like to recognize Madam Clerk to introduce her new staff.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I would like to introduce our new employee, Nicole Wright Bailey, if Nicole would stand. Nicole comes to us and she has experience working in Prince William County. She worked in the county attorney's office there. She's a native Roanoker and she graduated from William Fleming High School. She also has a bachelor's degree from Rafferty University. And we're so happy. She came in with her feet running. So she has some experience and know-how of the clerk's office. So we're really, really excited to have her. And we welcome her to the city of Roanoke.
Nicole. Congratulations and welcome. I don't know if that was, you guys coordinated that green today, but that was well done. And now we have a resolution memorializing the late Dr. Robert F. Roth, former president of Roanoke Valley Sister Cities. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the widow Dot Roth. Is Dot here or?
Yes, she's on screen.
Oh, on screen, oh, okay. I see you. Hi, Ms. Roth. And Dr. Robert F., Dr., I'm sorry, and Lauren Glover, the daughter, and Dr. Robert Roth.
No.
Hi. Are you in the same, are you in the same screen? Yes, there you are.
Yeah.
And Dr. Robert Roth also is going to accept the resolution via Zoom. Is?
This is the widow.
It's, oh, okay. So are you, are you ready with the resolution, Mr. Bespich?
I am, Madam Vice Mayor. A resolution memorializing the late Dr. Robert F. Roth, a former Methodist missionary surgeon, co-founder of Roanoke Valley Sister Cities, Inc., and longtime resident of the Roanoke Valley. Whereas the members of council learn with sorrow of the passing of Dr. Roth at the age of ninety-one on May fourteen, twenty-twenty-one. Whereas Dr. Roth was born in Queens, New York, on November two, nineteen-twenty-nine, and lived there with his family until college. Whereas at the age of sixteen, Dr. Roth was miraculously healed from a severe illness and made a covenant with God to become a doctor and serve wherever God directed. Whereas Dr. Roth graduated from Oberlin College in nineteen-fifty-one, from Columbia College of Physicians and Surgeons with residencies at St. Luke's Medical Center in nineteen-sixty, and earned his certification in general surgery in nineteen-sixty-one. Whereas in nineteen-fifty-two, Dr. Roth married Pauline Hattaway of Greenville, South Carolina. Whereas in nineteen-sixty-one, Dr. Roth and his wife traveled to Wonju, South Korea, where he worked as a medical missionary and served there from nineteen-sixty-one to nineteen-seventy-two. Whereas, following his return to the United States, Dr. Roth practiced medicine in the Roanoke Valley as a plastic surgeon at Lewis Gale Clinic in Salem, Virginia, from nineteen-seventy-three to nineteen-ninety-five, and also served at Bradley Free Clinic and three other local hospitals in Roanoke and Salem, Virginia. Whereas, upon the death of his wife, Pauline, in nineteen-seventy-four, Dr. Roth married a Korean missionary friend, Dorothy Hubbard, from Forest, Mississippi, in nineteen-seventy-five. Whereas during his time in Wonju, Dr. Roth developed a friendship with a surgeon, Dr. Young Yu Kim, and discovered he had practiced medicine in the city of Roanoke at the old Jefferson Memorial Hospital. Whereas, at Dr. Roth and Dr. Young Yu Kim's urging, the city of Roanoke established a sister-city relationship with Wonju in nineteen-sixty-four, citing the similar size, topography, and climate of the two cities. Whereas, the people of the Roanoke Valley and the people of Wonju have enjoyed cultural, medical, artistic, and educational exchanges. Whereas, Dr. Roth served as president of Roanoke Valley Sister Cities, Inc. from nineteen-ninety-one to twenty-ten, and was instrumental in forming additional sister-city connections between the city of Roanoke and Florianopolis, Brazil, Kisumu, Kenya, Lijiang, China, Skof, Russia, and Saint-Lô, France. Whereas, Dr. Roth retired in nineteen-ninety-five and helped to build and manage Peace Pagodas on the Lake, his home at Smith Mountain Lake, which was also used as a private retreat center for workshops and prayer retreats to foster peace, whether personal, local, or worldwide. Whereas, Dr. Roth and his wife Dot hosted numerous visitors from other countries and many events at their home Peace Pagoda on the Lake. And whereas, Dr. Roth will be remembered as someone who saw his life as a continual series of God's blessings and gave generously of his time and energy to make the Roanoke Valley a better place to live. Therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Roanoke as follows. Number one, city council adopts this resolution as a means of recording its deepest regret and sorrow at the passing of Dr. Robert F. Roth and extends to his family its sincerest condolences. Number two, the city clerk is directed to forward an attested copy of this resolution to Dr. Roth's widow, Dorothy H. Roth, of Hampton, Virginia. And Madam Vice Mayor, I move the resolution.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments by members of council? Madam Clerk, would you please call?
Thank you very much for honoring my husband.
We're going to take the vote, Ms. Roth.
All right, I will call the roll. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Bespich?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye. And the resolution passes. Now, the floor is open for any comments from either members of council or Ms. Roth, if you have anything you would like to say.
Thank you very much for honoring my husband. He loved Sister Cities and the Roanoke Canon Council. He often appeared at Roanoke Canon Council on behalf of Roanoke Cities. And he loved every endeavor that you worked on for our organization. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roth, and we appreciate your husband. We hope that you will accept this resolution as an expression of our condolences. And I will ask any of my other colleagues if they have anything to say. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Mrs. Roth and your family. We're so grateful for your husband's legacy and for his hard work in strengthening our sister cities throughout the years. His work as a missionary, his work here locally as a physician, all of the gifts he brought to us and that legacy will be carried forward. And so we express our sympathy to you and your family as you grieve, even as we celebrate his life and legacy.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Thank you again, Ms. Roth. Moving on to item number three.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Louise.
Moving on to item number three, Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters. City council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. If deemed appropriate, matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council. Due to the recent increase in severity in COVID-nineteen cases in the city of Roanoke, out of an abundance of caution, the Roanoke City Council has determined that temporary changes are necessary. Roanoke council members will continue to meet in person in city council chamber, observing all recommended safety protocols. While members of the community wishing to address the city council during hearings of citizens upon public matters are required to participate virtually or via email by contacting the city clerk's office at clerk@roanokeva.gov. And they can call five-four-zero-eight-five-three-two-five-four-one by twelve P M. on June seventh, which was today. The council chamber will not be accessible to the general public during the meeting. The meeting will continue to be broadcast via R V TV Three and on the city's Facebook account. As city clerk, are there any speakers, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have one speaker, and that is Terry McGuire.
Terry, are you on the phone, on the line? Mr. McGuire?
Do you think he's in the waiting room?
Who's operating it on?
C.C.'s operating.
From her office?
Yes. But we don't see him.
So we don't see Mr. McGuire. If he, sorry about that. I'm not sure what happened. We will move on to our consent agenda, item number four. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of city council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Bespich?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye. Deputy Clerk, is Mr. McGuire on now or?
No.
No, okay.
I tried to contact him, he was not on the line.
Okay, that's fine. We'll move on with the agenda. Thank you. And we'll move on to our regular agenda. Item number five, public hearings, there are none. Six, petitions and communications, there are none. Number seven, reports of the officers and comments of the city manager. And at this time, I will recognize our city manager for any briefings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just two quick items. One of those is, as has been reported in your weekly updates, this past weekend, we were finally, after a year, able to open up the city pools. So it's starting to feel like summer. So that is a good thing. So the pools at Washington Park and Fallon Park are open. Reopening of the pools was made possible in part from a, by a fundraiser, which was started actually by local Roanoke attorney, John Fishwick, who, if you'll recall, in our effort, we were hoping to keep the pools open last year, but then COVID came and really kept that from occurring. But he and other community members raised fifty-three thousand dollars to go toward this current opening. And that money is being used to pay for staff wages for, if you may recall, in this year, normally we have other parties actually operating our two pools. One of those parties was unable to do that this year because of their own financial challenges. And so city staff is actually operating the pool at Washington Park. So that is helping offset those costs. Information about the daily hours of operation and the rates can be found at playroanoke.com. The other thing I want to bring to the council's attention is the second phase of the pedestrian safety campaign conducted by our Transportation Division and through a grant from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles is underway. Last year, you'll recall that we, the campaign was focused on every corner is a crosswalk. So there were a number of different events as well as signs throughout the community to alert people to that, to that fact. This year, the focus is on increasing awareness of speeding as a pedestrian safety issue, especially on our smaller streets, on our minor arterial streets, as well as neighborhood collectors and residential streets. Plans include, much like the last campaign, special events, neighborhood walks, contests, and other activities to engage and educate the community, which will be providing you with more information regarding that. And we're leading to a formal kickoff of the campaign on June twenty-second. So as we get closer to that, we'll have more information. But just wanted to start raising awareness from, with the council as well as the community. And those are my reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cowell. Moving on to items recommended for action. Number one, the acceptance of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Funds from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for acquisition of properties in connection with the City of Roanoke Flood Plane Mitigation Project. There are two measures, a resolution and a budget ordinance.
Move the resolution.
Got both moving the resolution. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, would you read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program Grants made to the city from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management upon certain terms and conditions, and authorizing the city manager to execute any required documentation on behalf of the city in order to accept the grants.
So is there any discussion by members of council? Hearing none. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Bespich?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye, and the resolution passes.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you read the title paragraph?
Yes. An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for pre-disaster mitigation grant for the City of Roanoke Flood Plane Mitigation Project to acquire and demolish the former Seabreeze Nursing Home Facility, which is prone to flooding, amending and reordaining certain sections of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two general fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Is there any discussion by any member of council?
Well, I would just say that I saw the building, and I was a little bit sad that it had to be torn down. I thought it could be salvaged. But I was told by the assistant city manager that it was definitely in a floodplain. Just thought that was a wonderful building and a good place, could be some affordable housing, but that is not the case. But anyway, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Bespich?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Number two is acceptance of funds from Western Virginia Water Authority for utility work in connection with the Melrose Avenue Streetscape Improvements. There are two measures, a resolution and a budget ordinance.
Move the resolution. Second.
We have a motion of second and first and a second. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting the Western Virginia Water Authority's payment for work completed by the city contractor on the Melrose Avenue Streetscape Project in the total amount of seven-hundred-ninety-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-three dollars for water and sanitary sewer replacements, and authorizing the city manager to take certain other actions in connection with the above matters and project.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Vice Mayor, if I can just give a little bit of explanation what this project is?
Okay.
Because it is a substantial and significant project. The, as you all know, of course, for the last five years or so, the target area where we have focused a lot of particularly our CDBG attention has been in this Melrose area. And this is one of the larger capital projects that's being done that was a result of extensive conversations with the business owners in that area, as well as the larger residential areas surrounding it. The project consists in total of new curb and gutter, sidewalks, ADA-accessible ramps, drainage improvements, utility improvements, pedestrian lighting upgrades, new pavement, bus shelters, and landscaping. As is often the case in our partnership with the Water Authority, if we're doing major work in an area and they have water or wastewater lines that need to be repaired, we will work together on making that happen so that we don't do a project and they have to come in two years later and tear that project up, or vice versa. That's what's happening here. The project is almost a two-million-dollar project. And of course, this item deals with eight-hundred thousand of that, which will be coming from the Water Authority to address the water and wastewater. The engineering funds were actually paid for through CDBG funds. And the construction costs, not counting this piece, are equally divided between the CDBG funds that we allocate in this area, as well as end-of-year, basically, cash. You'll remember, we've talked before that sometimes at the end of the year, we have funds that we can apply toward capital projects. This is one of those projects. So that's sort of the source of funding for the overall project as it moves forward. And very much looking forward to the project company fruition. And it should pretty dramatically change the area.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be great to get it finished up. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
We now have a budget ordinance?
Move the budget ordinance.
Did we call the roll? We didn't call the roll.
I'm sorry. Yes. But Ms. Moon Reynolds, we're getting through this agenda.
Okay, Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Bespich?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Now the budget ordinance.
And the motion passes. Now we have a budget ordinance?
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you read the title paragraph, please?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Western Virginia Water Authority to perform the water and sanitary sewer replacements within the city contract, amending and reordaining certain sections of the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two capital projects fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Is there any discussion by any member of council? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item number three is acceptance of the 2021 Financial Empowerment Center Implementation Grant from the Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund, Inc. In connection with the operation of the city's Financial Empowerment Center, there are two measures, resolution and a budget ordinance.
Move the resolution. Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the 2021 Financial Empowerment Center Implementation Grant to the City of Roanoke from the Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund, Inc., authorizing the city manager to execute any documents necessary to receive such grant in order for the city to improve the financial stability of low and moderate income households by embedding financial empowerment strategies into local government infrastructure, and authorizing the city manager to take such further actions and execute such other documents as may be necessary to obtain, accept, implement, administer, and use such grant funds.
Do we have any discussion by any member of council?
Madam Vice Mayor, if I, again, on this one, if I can just give a
Absolutely.
A quick overview of this. This is, as you all know, we're entering into our second year of the beginning, if you will, of the Financial Empowerment Center, and you may recall that in order to do that, we received a two-year grant from the Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund. This is actually the second grant. The first grant was in the amount of $200,000. This is in the amount of $100,000, and we are also partnered with Freedom First Enterprises, and so our match to the grant is made up of the staff person that we have in place, and actually, two staff people that Freedom First Enterprises has provided as a part of their counseling structure that they have made available for this program and for this project. So this is the, as I said, this is the second year. We've also received grants from Corillian Clinic to help with this as well, and we actually just last week received word that we received yet another grant from the Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund, and that's for $25,000, and it will specifically go to addressing issues around eviction. So the center is already seeing hundreds of clients and actually already started to advance on a number of its objectives. So happy that this opportunity still remains available, and we're now moving into the phase where next year we will be without grant dollars, so it will be completely self-sustained at that point, and we'll certainly have more information about that as we go forward.
That's wonderful news. Mr. Cowell, do you know if they are going to be scheduled to open like the other businesses, June 15th, because they have been doing virtual intake?
Yeah, I don't actually know when they're open, when they'll start doing things in person. I'll find that out. The libraries are actually some of our remote locations that we can do the counseling, but I will find that out, because I don't know when they'll move from virtual. I know they're very anxious to do so, as you can imagine. Doing counseling over virtual is not exactly ideal, so.
Yeah, I heard it was pretty challenging. Thank you, Mr. Cowell. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, I'll ask that you call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye, and the resolution passes. We have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Financial Empowerment Fund for financial counseling of low and moderate income individuals, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 General Fund and Grant Fund Appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Any discussion by any member of council? Nothing to add on this, Mr. Cowell? Hearing no questions or no discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item number four, amendment of the City Code Stormwater Utilities Section with regard to fees for collection. There is one measure, an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and re-ordaining Section 11.5-8A, billing, penalties, and interest of Chapter 11.5, Stormwater Utility, and Section 14.1 through 5, fees for collection of Article 1 in general of Chapter 14.1D, solid waste management of the Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended, to provide for a graduated penalty in the event of late payments based on how soon such taxes are paid after their original date due, establishing an effective date, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Any discussion by any member of council? Mr. Best pitch?
Well, I think a lot of times when people hear us talk about penalties and interest and those sorts of things, they think it's increasing the penalty or whatever. I wonder if Mr. Cowell could just give us a brief rundown on what we're accomplishing here that will actually be to the benefit of a lot of citizens.
Correct. Currently, in our real estate side of things, if you are late in your payment, there is what amounts to a graduated penalty, meaning the longer it takes for you to pay beyond that due date, the greater the penalty is. If you're able to pay up closer, there's a lower penalty. That benefit is not afforded in some of our other areas, such as solid waste. For example, it automatically goes to the highest penalty. What this will do is align all of our late fees or late penalties with that same process, so that if you're able to pay close to the due date, the penalty is much less than if it is extensive and beyond the due date by quite some distance. So that's the idea, is to try to make it both simpler to administer, but also to recognize that those folks that miss the due date by just a couple of days will not be penalized in the same way in which someone who might not be paying the bill for months as we go on.
Yeah, it's actually a total of 15 days beyond the due date, which I think is quite generous. We always want everybody to pay all of our obligations on time, obviously, but if someone misses the deadline for whatever reason, and they get it in within 15 days after that, there's only a 2% penalty, and then after 15 days, it goes back up to 10%, as it has been in the past. So I hope that some of our citizens appreciate the fact that we're gonna let them have a little bit more flexibility in getting their payments in. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Yeah, a little grace period there. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item number five is amendment of the City Code in connection with tax on real estate and tangible personal property of public service corporations. There is one measure, and it's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance amending and re-ordaining Section 32-124B, when due and payable, Article 4, Tax on Real Estate and Tangible Personal Property of Public Service Corporations, Chapter 32, Taxation, Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended, to change the due date of the first installment of taxes due upon the real estate and real estate improvements of public service corporations from October 5th to December 5th, providing for an effective date, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Is there any discussion by any member of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, I'd ask to call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Moving on to item number six, approval and authorization of an encroachment permit for Mountain View Neighborhood Association for a bus shelter located at 208 18th Street Southwest at the intersection of Salem Avenue and 18th Street Southwest. There is one measure, and it's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance. Second.
Is there, Madam Clerk, would you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance allowing a bus shelter encroachment requested by the Greater Roanoke Transit Company doing business as Valley Metro into the public right-of-way located at the intersection of Salem Avenue Southwest and 18th Street Southwest, adjacent to property located at 208 18th Street Southwest, bearing official tax map number 1211601, and which bus shelter will be located within the city right-of-way upon certain terms and conditions, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Is there any discussion by any member of council? Mr. Cobb?
Thank you. I just wanted to commend the Mountain View Neighborhood Association and the Hurt Park Neighborhood Association for their collaborative work on this location. It's a really great location, and I appreciate their partnership in making this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Anyone else? Any comments?
I'd just like to add that Ms. Dickie reached out to me because she knew that we were trying to get another shelter at the Valley View location, saying that they had money left over, and was willing to give what money they had left over, but turns out, it doesn't quite work that way. But I wanted to thank her for that gesture, because we do want one at Valley View. I'm not sure what happened with that, but that's another story for another day, but I hope that we can come back to that conversation at some point. But if there's no further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Now we'll move on to comments of our city manager, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Cowell.
Nothing further, ma'am. Nothing further.
You have nothing further, okay. And B, we'll move on to our city attorney. We have, number one, we have approval to amend and re-ordain ordinance, number one, number, I'm sorry, number 40998-110617, to lower the insurance required of the property owner to maintain an encroachment from $2 million in general liability insurance coverage to $300,000 in personal liability insurance coverage for a structure located at 2417 Guilford Road Southwest into the right-of-way. And there are, I mean, there's one measure, and it's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance amending and re-ordaining ordinance number 40998-110617, adopted by the City Council on November 6, 2017, which authorized an existing encroachment pursuant to Section 15.2-2011 Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, caused by the property located at 2417 Guilford Avenue Southwest, Roanoke, Virginia, designated as official tax map number 1550219, extending into a portion of the city's right-of-way of an adjacent alley by lowering the amount of general liability insurance coverage required to be obtained by the property owner to maintain the encroachment, upon certain terms and conditions, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Is there any discussion by any member of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, I'd ask to call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item number two, amendment of ordinance numbers 41930, 41931, 41932, 41933, 41934, and 41935-122120, to provide for an effective date upon the date the integrated tax revenue system is successfully implemented on January 3, 2022, whichever date comes earlier for implementation, has been delayed, and is now expected to occur on October 19, 2021. And there is one measure, and it's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph, please?
An ordinance amending and re-ordaining ordinance numbers 41930-122120, 41931-122120, 41932-122120, 41933-122120, 41934-122120, and 41935-122120, all adopted by City Council on December 21, 2020, by changing the effective date of such ordinances from July 1, 2021, until the date of the cities, of the city of Roanoke's integrated tax revenue system is successfully implemented on January 3, 2022, whichever date comes earlier, upon certain terms and conditions, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Is there any discussion by any member of council? Well, I guess you could tell the enthusiasm that I had, October 19, 2021. How exciting.
I thought it was October 20.
October 19, 2021.
Oh, that's even better.
A day earlier, Mr. Best.
That's even better.
We're all enthused.
That was a very special day for me.
It was?
Yes. I was appointed on that day.
That is. Yes, that is.
Oh, no, that was 2020.
Madam Clerk, I will ask that you call the roll before we get these dates confused.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Ah, let me make sure. Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey? Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Moving on to item number eight, reports of committees. We have none. Unfinished business, none. Item number 10, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions, none. And item number 11, motions and miscellaneous business, and any inquiries and comments by council, and the mayor is not present, any comments or any? Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Just a couple of things. Roanoke has so many wonderful things happening in our city every day and every weekend, and this last weekend, I just wanted to highlight two. On Saturday, Humble Hustle hosted a Chalk Up the City with Love, and throughout our city, residents all over were literally chalking up the city with messages of love and hope and encouragement. This is the second annual event of this kind, and so I want to commend everyone who participated in that. And then I think all of us are aware that Ironman, which was originally scheduled for last year for its inaugural run in Roanoke, was postponed because of COVID, and it happened this weekend, and it's absolutely extraordinary event. Racers, athletes from all over the world, I think 43 states, had representatives here. We had a lot of people from Roanoke participating. These athletes swam 1.2 miles in Carver's Cove, over 56 miles riding a bicycle up a five-mile ascent through the mountains, and then a 13-mile run. And all of them are to be commended. I'd like to thank the Ironman Organization, whose setup and running organizationally was seamless. Great cooperation from all of our localities, and we'll see what the overall economic impact is, but I think it will be extraordinary. So I just want to thank our city and our region and everyone who helped to make this possible. It's an absolutely extraordinary event, and celebrating the endurance and fierceness of all these athletes. So, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, and certainly congratulate all those athletes. And I think we'd be remiss if I didn't mention Councilmember Michelle Davis for her work and efforts in the Ironman. She's not here with us today, but she certainly put a lot of time and energy into making that happen, so I certainly would like to recognize her. Mr. Best pitch, you have something you want to say?
Well, I just wanted to add that, you know, all the hundreds of volunteers and just everybody throughout the city who was so welcoming, wherever they saw people, whether it was in a store, restaurant, or wherever it may be, we certainly received some very positive feedback. Many of these athletes travel all around to do these events, and they, some of them described Roanoke as one of the friendliest places that they'd ever come for this competition. And so I just hope that the good citizens of Roanoke know how much we appreciate that, and we have a chance to do it again next year.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other question? Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I just wanted to ask if the city manager would, if he doesn't mind, not to be a damper here, but, you know, we all received the email from Mr. Jack Smith on the resource officers in the schools having been removed to be placed back under the police department, and I just want you to share, if you could, for the public's sake, to understand what really did occur.
Sure. So as is customary with the school resource officers, at the end of the year, those officers are reassigned back into the police department, typically on patrol and what have you, and that would, of course, this year occur this week. So later this week, school will end. Last week, I think Tuesday or Wednesday, because of our current staffing levels, we removed those officers one week early to get them back out onto patrol, so that we could ensure that we had adequate numbers in patrol. So that, and Mr. Smith had questioned that action, and he had some questions for the school as well, and what I did not provide to you all is, the superintendent has provided him an answer from the school side of his questions as well, so he certainly has received answers from both of us. I'm not saying he agrees with that decision, but he received answers from both of us.
And so it is the city's intent to place them back in, in the fall when school opens?
Sure, right now, the budget that is in front, that was in front of you all, that has been presented, includes funding both from the school and from the city for those officers, just as we have done in the past, and it is our intention that those would be placed back in, the officers would be placed back in the schools. As you all know, that, of course, is conditioned upon us having adequate resources to be able to adequately staff patrol, but at this point, that's the plan. Obviously, we've got all summer to continue to work on trying to make sure that that happens, but that's certainly the objective.
Thank you.
And obviously, if that's not the case, you all will know about that before, before that happens.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Moving on to 11B, vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committee appointed by council. The council member has placed names in nomination, and, Mr. Cobb? You have, okay, we will count, ask Mr. Cobb to list the nominees and when you vote.
The certification motion.
Oh. Y'all got it straight. Do you have it, Mr. Best? Okay.
He has.
Okay, he has it.
He has the certification motion we need to do first, and then I'll.
Yeah, okay. So we're gonna come out, they got it backwards here, we're gonna come out of the closed meeting first.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I move, with respect to any closed meeting just concluded, that each member of City Council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance. Second.
Oh, I was going to say, I need a motion. You got a second, okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Beszic?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye, and the motion passes. And now I'll call on Mr. Cobb to, oh, Mr. Beszic, okay.
I'm sorry.
They're over here coordinating on each side of me. I can't keep up.
We got you. Apologize. Madam Vice Mayor, the nominees to be voted on today for the Defined Contribution Board, Clarence Greer; for the Fair Housing Advisory Board, Alicia Merchant; for the Market Building Foundation Board of Directors, Brent Robertson; for the Mill Mountain Advisory Board, Terry McGuire; for the Personnel and Employment Practices Commission, Lori Baker Lloyd; for the Roanoke Arts Commission, Victoria McNiff; for Roanoke Valley Juvenile Detention Center Commission, the nominee is Lauren Fennel; and for Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge Board of Directors, Steve Lemon; and for the Youth Services Citizen Board, Douglas Pitzer. Those are all the nominees for today.
Thank you, and I'll ask Madam Clerk to call the roll, and if you all are in agreement for all nominees, just say "all nominees."
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
All nominees.
Mr. Beszic?
All nominees.
Mr. Cobb?
All nominees.
Mr. Jeffrey?
All nominees.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
All nominees.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
All nominees, and the motion passes. Well, there being no further business set forth to come before the council, the regular session of City Council is adjourned.
Derek Thompson tells us one hopeful buyer in Bethesda, Maryland, promised to name her firstborn child after the seller. She did not get the house, maybe thankfully, depending on the seller's name. Home prices are at a...